Call the planning commission for April twenty first, twenty twenty five to order at seven oh three P M. First item in business will be roll call. I chair Andrew Chessman, President, Vice Chair Kilkup.
Present.
Commissioner Hurley.
Present.
Commissioner Lambert, which we do not have online or in person, or any notice. Commissioner Meruziak.
Present.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
All right, so we do have a quorum. I do move, we excused Commissioner Lambert on the last one. I'll do outreach as well as I request staff's assistance for outreach with Commissioner Lambert. But I move that this one not be excused. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and all in favor? Thank you. All right, bear with me, I'm juggling screens here. All right. Public comment, do we have any public comment for items on the agenda? Anyone present? Okay. So no public comment, let's move on to agenda approval. I move that we approve tonight's agenda for April twenty first as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. And council liaison report, Councilmember Johnson, please.
Okay, perfect. You just stand here awkwardly next to me, that's fine. All right, greetings, Planning Commission. We just had a wonderful conversation, Community Development Committee, about the historic downtown retail overlay, or whatever the proper name for that is, along with changes to center and the mixed use final plan. And there were definitely some good questions about what the intent is. I think the most challenging part about it is just understanding what it is. What is the process? What are all the moving parts? And why do we have to do all these individual things? But once the council has been wrapping their heads around it, I think that it's starting to make a lot of sense and starting to gel. I will be connecting with the chair and the chair previously to make sure that we got some factual information right about what the intent was for the expansion of the overlay in the downtown region. Just clarifying a little point to make sure we got it right from the planning commission's intent. We did have some staffing shuffling in the mix while that transition was going on from planning commission to community development committee. And let's see. Right, the council has been having a robust conversation about the utility rates. It's a tough process, unfortunately. Things cost money and things cost more money as time goes on. So we are looking at some utility rate increases and we're just trying to limit it as much as we possibly can and to make the shares equitable across the city as we can for the different sectors of the city. So you can be looking forward to more discussion at the council about that. Let's see, two more things. The council did approve awarding the reclaimed water distribution system improvements, which is the big tank that's going to go up by the golf course to prospect construction incorporated for, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of seven million. Maybe City Administrator Trambless can remind me. Yeah. Is it eight? Okay. Yeah. That's right, part of it, yeah, okay. So it's around eight million. So we did do that. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that at long last, the water is flowing at the splash pad. It's not safe yet for kids to be in, or I guess adults too, I suppose. But they are doing all the various balancing of the chemistry of the water and making sure that everyone on staff who needs to know how to run the facility knows how to run the facility and all those kinds of things. And I believe the grand opening is targeted for June sixth. Yes, for June sixth at some point. I don't know when the exact time of this ceremony is, but yeah, so that'll be our grand opening. Just in time for my daughter's birthday. Can't wait. So that's my update for the commission and I'd be happy to take any questions. And I love it when I have staff here so I can go, I don't know, what is it, stuff?
All right, we'll open it up. I'll start with just going from left to right, Commissioner Meruziak.
Yeah, on the splash pad, it's it's concrete, right? Last night I looked, I mean, they're going to put a pad down there, right?
I don't believe so.
You're going to have kids on the concrete?
Yep.
It'll be wet.
Yes, I believe that it does have a rough surface. Runs smooth.
It's the equivalent of pool deck. Yeah.
Okay.
Pads grow things you don't want growing. Yeah, so it's concrete.
And I think it would also be expensive, right? The foamy stuff.
Well, you have to change it every so often and it flakes off and clogs the filters, it destroys pumps. Other than that, it's great stuff.
Right.
Okay. Just curious.
I did have the same concern, I've got two little kids and I think the pool deck analogy is a good one.
Okay. It's all right. Vice Chair Kilkup.
No questions for me.
Awesome. Commissioner Hurley.
No questions.
All right. Commissioner Murphy?
Nothing this week.
And none for me. Thanks so much, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
All right, looking at the agenda, I move that we approve the minutes dated April seventh, twenty twenty five as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, those minutes are approved. And moving on to permit review, design review board, we have D R B twenty twenty five, number one, Snoqualmie Valley Health Designer Review Board Presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mona Davis, the interim Community Development Director. And I'm really excited to introduce you to the Snoqualmie Valley Health Hospital team tonight. PJ Bowser is here to do a presentation on the design review board materials. And then Andrew Levens from staff will follow up with a recommendation to you. So I suggest, I also wanted to mention too that Renee Jensen is on the call on Zoom. So she's available as well if any questions come up tonight. But I think PJ, if you want to go ahead and take it over.
Yeah, thank you.
We'd love to hear about the project.
Yes. I'm PJ Bowser, I'm a partner with Mailham Architects, been working with the hospital group for over a year now in the development of what we think is an incredibly exciting opportunity here in Snoqualmie to extend access to health and a community health program more broadly. And I'd like to offer Renee just a couple of moments to share the importance of the project from the hospital's perspective.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. We are so excited to present our project to you. Just quickly, we are excited for a couple of reasons. One, because this project is more than just healthcare. It's about an innovative approach to taking healthcare from sick care to well care and meeting our community where they are. It also had some roots of inspiration from my time that I got to spend on the steering committee for the economic development. And realizing that post COVID, our community really had a desire to connect again and wanted to get back to places where they could spend time with their friends and their families and their children. And so we really attempted to think about the broader needs of the Snoqualmie Valley area and not just about healthcare in the design of this project. So you'll see some very creative elements that are bringing all of those pieces of healthcare and community together. In addition, we know that this is the first thing that visitors may see as they come into Snoqualmie. And we want to make sure that this project is a great first impression and something that the city can be very proud of and something that is unique and sets Snoqualmie apart from other cities you might visit. So I'm here for questions tonight. I also have my team in attendance in the audience and we're more than happy to answer any questions you might have. So thank you very much for having us.
Thanks, Renee. I think importantly, the hospital group challenged us right from the beginning with their new vision of asking us to think about what it means to live boldly and live well. And we think we've tackled that and embodied that in the project, but with some guiding principles that I think are helpful to share with the commission here this evening. One, that the project really focuses on community health and wellness, that we're creating something that goes beyond just functional spaces, but thinks about the community as a whole and creating this active and well and engaged community. It's important that we think about attracting and retaining staff. In order to support the entire community, we need to be drawing the best and the brightest practitioners to the community to provide the best care here. And of course, we are thinking big and bold in a forward effort with innovation. You'll start to see that both in the form of the building, but also in the amenities that are being provided. We live in a beautiful area, we're taking advantage of a beautiful site. We think we're actually restoring that site to some of its original grandeur. And so that connection to nature is important to us as well. And of course, this is a revenue-driven design. So some of the components here are very important in order to make sure the fiscal responsibility of the hospital is maintained. Really, in thinking about the project centered around this primary concept of developing Snoqualmie Valley Health as a hub that highlights innovation with program offerings, connects to nature and invites this community to health and wellness offerings that are beyond those conventions. So it's a fairly simple form in terms of its overall complexity. Sometimes we think about it from a clinical planning side as being more of a machine of medical planning on the inside, but with some really distinct amenities that are put on the outside and create that visual interest and intrigue that starts to draw us in and think about this as something more than just a standard clinical building. I think many of you are familiar with the project site. Most, many of you who live on the ridge probably drive by it every day. The site is directly adjacent to the northeast of the existing hospital at the intersection of Southeast Ninety Ninth and Snoqualmie Parkway. It has been undeveloped and cleared for over fourteen years at this point and is available is distinct in the north and south and northeastern corners being protected in this area by trees or shown by trees on the indication here as wetland areas. So we are looking to develop in the previously cleared area and provide some additional restoration to the wetlands as additional protection. When we look at it from a site planning organization, there are a couple of elements that are really critical to this. The building is located pushed to the northern boundary up against the wetlands to allow space for site access and driveway coming through so that there's connection off of Snoqualmie Parkway. We are limiting with right in, right out only from that. We are also providing at the intersection of Southeast Ninety Ninth and Snoqualmie Parkway, just off the page here will be a traffic signal improvement that will be forthcoming in a future permitting effort here to close out the overall project. And then the site plan itself is organized with the building kind of centrally located in three tiers of park or three tiers of site parking. The lower level to the west, which is related to the hospital and the emergency department entrance, allows for connectivity and to think more of a campus feel. There is a drop off level that is aligned with the building center in the middle. And as we make up the topography, the top right of the drawing here allows us to slope up and address more retail and ambulatory care functions. Those three distinctions are important for us in terms of the overall function of the building. But what you're also seeing in the drawing here is the central area, see if how the mouse is going to show up for me here, is where we've made a rather significant gesture to create a breezeway through the project here. This is what's really the essence of the hub and what we think starts to make this very different from most clinical buildings, really bringing everyone into this central location and then dispersing out from there. So this becomes an activity, a point of action in center. Programmatically, you're also familiar with the topography on the site. The building is stepping in order to address that topography with a four-story massing to the west and a four-story massing to the east by slipping in, in addition, the lower level basement is a half level there to make that four stories work. We have loading and outpatient imaging services on the lower level. So for the most acute patients or connections to acute activities in the hospital, we have that activity directly to the west. The main level where the hub is located starts to take on a more urgent type services or immediate access services, including retail pharmacy, immediate care, lab services, those type of clinical functions. But also starts to introduce some new programs that we think are really exciting for the community including dining and community meeting spaces, climbing wall and access to a second floor where there will be rehab, physical fitness and therapy centers. That second floor really becomes kind of an extension of the first in terms of its programmatic function. And then the third floor becomes clinical space, more traditional medical office building for specialty and primary care providers, lab spaces, and then on the top, we have ambulatory surgery facility allowing for outpatient surgeries for day surgery type pieces there. In terms of the overall massing, we think this looks like something that's a little bit different than you may have seen in other buildings here. The primary building box is clad in a metal panel system that has significant corrugations and patterning so that we get an actual textural quality to that that gives a nice depth and shadowing throughout that changes throughout the day as light passes over it. There's a simplicity to that form that allows the front box that projects out from the hub to become more distinct in a welcoming entrance that's facing off of Snoqualmie Parkway here. That becomes the feature point for the climbing wall behind. So the glass box that you are seeing on the front corner reveals into the into the climbing wall space can be lit from the inside and become a really active and engaging space. Just around the corner from what you're looking at is the entrance point to the hub, which is the central location for the entire project. This allows access into the retail functions as well as bringing you into the meeting spaces, dining spaces. And of course, the hospital group has already brought on board an executive chef with the plans to make an incredible restaurant experience as well. So we think you will all be joining in dining here soon. The box around the front is clad in a darker fiber cement panel, which gives a certain level of depth in reference to the adjacent mountain scapes. And then the inside of the hub is clad in wood tongue and groove cedar siding to give more of that, excuse me, Western red cedar siding to give us more of that warmth and draw into the interior space there. Looking at it from the other direction, this is coming from Frontier Avenue. So this would be the drive access to the hospital looking up. We carry that same language of the main entrance of the hub down to the lower level to have a secondary entrance for ambulatory surgery patients for direct access into the diagnostic imaging services. This becomes a little bit more of a secondary entrance, but is still distinct and defined with canopies and overhangs to make the entrance clear and to provide visual interest. It's also important that this has a little bit of discretion to it because this is where patients will be brought after they have had ambulance or after they have had surgical procedures. So it gives a little bit of a back door for someone coming out not necessarily feeling their best to have a exit point that's a little bit more discreet for pickup and drop off. The other piece that you can see in the landscaping here as we're making up the topography is a connection across, so thinking more of this as a campus amenity allows us to bring folks back and forth from the hospital up the grade here with a really engaging walk, landscape walk that brings everyone into the central point of the hub. To give you a little bit of a flavor of what we think those interior spaces are looking like, the top left is the hub and the breezeway demonstrating the interior space and the volume that you get there. The upper glass areas are from the P T and wellness spaces, so physical therapy areas with those views. And then being able to look all the way through and connect to the wetlands. So really reinforcing the enhancements that we're making to the buffers and to the wetlands to make sure that this is a thriving, well-surviving ecosystem. From the interior spaces, focusing on wellness and community, but both dining spaces that should be active and engaging. And then also the climbing wall, which we think is going to be an amazing two-story space and a real amenity for people to be able to both use, have potentially children climbing while you're going to the restaurant or vice versa and use it for actual therapy sources as well. All in all, we think this is going to be a great community resource over time. In terms of the programmatic massing, just clarifying the elevations for you again. The building is organized really in two four-story buildings, meeting the compliance requirements of the mixed use development requirements here, so four-story limitations. So both on the stepping massing with four stories to the west and four stories to the east. Prominent features of the corner hub showing off on the east and south sides. And when we carry those around, you can see in more detail the breezeway actually cutting through and the smaller, more discreet entrance at the lower level for the imaging and ambulatory surgery access points. Think I covered the highlights for you here. I'm going to, if you indulge me for just a moment and see if this is actually going to work. Just to give you a little bit of additional context, we did bring a walkthrough that we can do here to give you a little bit more of a sense of the three-dimensional qualities of the building here. So from the Snoqualmie Parkway side, you can see the prominent prow coming forward. As we move ourselves around, try not to go, whoops, I went a little bit faster than I meant to there. Start to get a sense of what that hub space is going to be like. The scale of the entry parking and plaza here, improvements really to make that pedestrian friendly. I believe that I accidentally skipped over describing that we are extending the Snoqualmie Parkway Trail on and across the site along our side access drive and down to Southeast Ninety Ninth Street as part of the project. And as we move ourselves forward here, oh, I really overshot that, I'm sorry. Driving in Zoom was not my best decision. But you can start to get some of the sense of those, both the P T spaces, what the breezeway will actually allow for us here and as we walk into that space, the great community amenity this can actually be with community spaces on the right, retail pharmacy on the left, dining that can actually spill out and become really an active space nine, ten seasons or nine, ten months of the year, maybe December and January, a little bit tough. But we think this is going to be a really great space. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew, I believe, for staff recommendations or any questions if we're supposed to address those first.
If you're, if you're good with it, I'd like to do a round of questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Meruziak, any questions?
Yes, what happens to the existing facility?
The existing facility is unchanged. This is the lot adjacent to the existing facility. So if I back you up for just a second here.
So you're going to continue to use it as is, there's no change in the subject?
Yes, the hospital will remain as is. This is a medical office building, so these are for ambulatory care patients. So the hospital as an inpatient facility will continue to operate in its function.
And PJ, if I can jump in, I can add some more detail to that. So most of the services that we're adding on the clinical side for the hub are net new for us. It will be an expansion of our existing primary care and specialty clinics. And of course, surgery would be new and so pretty much everything is new. And the current existing hospital, we are definitely outgrowing our space. And this will allow us to spread our wings and provide some more services and address some of those healthcare needs that we are definitely seeing in our community. And but other than that, these will definitely be pretty much new for us.
Okay, okay. All good, all right. Vice Chair Kilkup?
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
So the first is just the intended user of the space. Is that going to be the hospital or is the hospital building the building for third-party tenants?
The hospital is a, is the builder and owner and they will operate the facility.
Right, who's going to occupy the space?
These will be hospital employees, they will be employees of Snoqualmie Valley Health.
Okay. The next was that metal siding. I really love the way it looks in a rendering. I'm just wondering how it's going to look like in three years once it gets dirty. Like and what's the cleaning schedule? I know it's metal siding, so it's easy-ish to clean, but.
Actually cleans really well. And if you bear with me for just a moment while, if you had a second question, I'm going to look something up for you at the same time because we have photographs of a similar project. But fire, fire away and I can answer that one for you.
Okay, and the next question I have was, I didn't see any shots that showed the elevator machine room. I'm just curious what that looks like on the roof.
Yes, so, all right, this was, you did a good job of catching me here. Okay, so for the, for the metal panel, this is actually a similar, if not exactly the same pattern for us that we have done in downtown Seattle that has been up for a year and a half now in place. You still get the same level of texture. It is a slightly different panel, pattern that we're actually using, but I think it's performing extremely well and holding up.
Which building is that?
This is the Northwest Kidney Center in downtown Seattle, just south of Harborview.
Okay.
It's at.
This is a beautiful picture, but it looks like it was when it was first done.
This is when it was, well, it had been, the metal panel had been up for about nine months at the time this picture was taken. And I'd be happy to arrange a time to take you by.
Yeah, that's, it's just a concern.
What was that? Yeah, so we have quite a problem of architectural photography as we take it at the shortly after the building. But we certainly can find some representations for you that show that it wears very well. When with the kynar finish on it, it holds up and lasts.
Yeah, yeah, just that the, whatever the material is and that the cleaning schedule, like, you know, everyone's expectations are on the same place, so it's not going to have like those kind of gray streaks down the side.
Yes, I think with metal panel, the gray streaks are not really a concern of this, this type of panel. And in particular with the profiling that it gets, they'll kind of, if you were to start to get some discoloration, it'll disappear in that
channel.
That visual channel that you start to get there. So I think it will actually perform very well from both a maintenance perspective and from a visual perspective. I lost track of your second question, I'm sorry.
The elevator machine room?
Elevator machine room, yes. We do have a penthouse in the project. Click ourselves forward. It is artfully screened at the top here, but the elevator machine rooms are actually on these, on the fourth floor in this surgery surgery floor, so they're internal to the building.
Okay.
And if we were to go to the elevations for you here, just for clarity, the penthouse is tucked in in this area right up here. So all of the mechanical units are screened and protected from view from the street.
And then the last question I have was the climbing wall, the dining, you know, you said like, oh, it's going to be this great active space.
Yes.
I'm curious, like, I love the idea of it, but who's going to be climbing the climbing wall? And who's activating the space? Is that thought that it'll be patients or the community itself or?
The intent is a combination of both. Oh, Renee, you can chime in.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that, PJ. So our, our hope is that the community, this will be a place for the community to come and use it of all ages. We also have a very innovative approach to integrating our physical therapy and rehab program. And so we will be expanding that extensively. And that department will be overseeing the use of the climbing wall and also the A I gym. So we'll have artificial intelligence, some very high-tech technology workout type of equipment, which will be integrated into our therapy program, but also inviting the community to use it as well. And of course, our staff, our staff are a huge part of this community. And to your earlier question, you had asked about who will occupy the space. This at full capacity, the hub would double our current staffing. So we would go from somewhere around three hundred F T Es or three hundred employees to six hundred by the time it's fully staffed and up and running with all the programs full.
And if I could add on, the A I portion that Renee was referencing on the physical therapy floor actually allows for integration between primary care physicians or specialty physicians to actually prescribe workouts and processes that can then be translated to the machine. So it increases compliance and we think it's going to have some pretty profound effects on people's recovery and overall wellness.
And A I workouts is when the machine works out for you?
I wish, right?
It is artificial intelligence, not the artificial limbs.
That's all for me.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Hurley?
I've got a few questions in regards to traffic patterns and what this would do to the area. I'm not sure this is the correct venue for it, these, these.
We can certainly speak to them.
Okay. Obviously, there's a, there's a lot of construction going on right now. They're, they're adapting the highway interchange there.
Yes.
And that the Highway eighteen going down to Maple Valley is in the middle of being expanded. Do we have an E T A on when that's due to be completed? Or is that a silly question at this point?
Next year sometime.
Next year?
I don't think, yeah, early next year.
Okay. So obviously, this would be adding additional construction to that is something we need to take into account. That piece of road, I mean, every time I go down there to the highway, it is a bit of an eyesore at the moment. You know, the, what's facing the road at the moment is, there's like some trash there and it's, it's not a very pretty piece of property. There's a, there's an entrance that goes. There's like some trash there and it's, it's not a very pretty piece of property, there's a, there's an entrance that goes in that just sort of stops at like a chain fence or something like that. So I did notice that there was an image in your packet here that talks about the entrance going in from the road. Is that fairly representative and it's a little tough to tell from this image what that's really going to look like?
Yes, if I went backwards, I think it's this lower end.
Yes, it looks like it was adapted from a Google image shot that was.
It's, it's adapted from my iPhone shot, from walking out there, so we overlaid it on there. It is not as representative yet of the landscaping that would be to come because some of that would obscure the intent of the building beyond.
Yes.
The intent here though, that you're seeing is the drive access comes through. That we do have landscaping coming along and at this edge here, we would actually be bringing down the. Extension of south of the Snoqualmie Parkway Trail and wrapping it around that. So I think the front portion here with the landscaping and buffer enhancements that we have. Planned will be significantly improved over the scrub land that you have currently.
I'm not really seeing that in this photo, but I understand it's not necessarily representative.
Yes, I think this was a place. We did not fully represent the landscape here.
Okay. And then the, the other question, and I, and I don't know who this would actually need to be addressed at is. How we would sort of understand what the impact to local medical professionals would be. My impression after being here for two years is that the local medical community is a little bit overtaxed. And that there are not enough doctors, there's not enough medical professionals currently. To service what, what the town needs and, and what the surrounding towns need. But I'm curious what we'd be doing as far as understanding what that impact would be to the, the current medical professionals and whether that's going to. Reduce strain, potentially increase financial burden, that kind of thing, and how we'd be determining that.
I can take that one PJ.
But I think Renee can actually answer that one, sorry Renee.
No, no, thank you, I appreciate the question, it's really important, especially in a smaller community like Snoqualmie. We actually have done extensive market assessments. Which show that at least right now, we're a minimum of 10 providers short of being able to meet the needs of this local community. There's a lot of pressure on our local clinicians and they aren't able to get patients in. They also aren't necessarily serving your Medicare and Medicaid patients and their panels are closed to new patients, so. If you were to call around currently, you might wait three to six months to get a new patient appointment, so. This should definitely relieve some of that primary care burden. There also is very limited to non-existing specialty services in our community and we, our, our market assessment shows. Over an 80% outmigration for those services outside of our community, so. Ideally, this will help lessen commutes, it'll help people get care closer to home. We also are opening a clinic in North Bend this year as well in addition, so we can add some additional providers and help. Relieve some of that burden earlier as well, so. We also, the local providers are welcome and many of them are active participants in our medical staff and we work collaboratively with them. And work to support them, our, our goal with this is not to impact any of our local providers, but really provide. A complimentary service for them, so I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you very much.
Renee, I believe it would be fair to say that the, some of the amenities of the building are intended to attract some of that top quality to. Add to the provider base in the area.
Yeah, I, I'm without, I know it's a little bit off track, but we locally have been able to recruit so many. People who are living in our local community that were originally traveling for work outside. And so even just with the promise of the hub coming and growing our services, we've been able to keep some of our residents closer to home for their employment as well.
And then the, the final question I had was, in reviewing the Resolution 907 from I believe 2008. Originally, this piece of property was, was set aside for. Church, private school, public transportation, park and ride. Are we at a point now where we believe that those things are, are not as necessary as this and that. That makes sense for us to go ahead and modify the original planning from back then. So something to, to, to take into consideration. My, my understanding is that the light rail expansion that is coming in, I believe in around 2030 is only coming as far as Issaquah. So I don't believe there's any park and ride necessity unless we need it for busing. But I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing else that, I mean, it sounds like the property's been vacant for a decade and a half now, so. It would probably make sense to, to look at rezoning it.
Yes, my understanding is. Resolution 907 did provide that rezoning and made this a applicable use and we are applying under that standard.
That's correct, and it is under private ownership, so.
Okay, so the city would be purchasing it from a private owner?
No, the hospital group is purchasing, purchasing and developing the property, the city is not developing this property.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
And thus, there is no future for it as a park and ride.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Murphy.
Yeah, a couple of questions here, I'm going to follow up to Vice Chair Kilcup on. What's the vision for who's using the gym, the climbing wall, some of the like, community type features, is that? A membership, is that, what's the structure for getting people into the facility in that sense?
I can take that PJ, absolutely a membership type for the gym itself or even just prescriptions or for rehab, either. Post or pre-surgical strength building, we hope to also invite other user groups like local clubs to come and be able to have time in the gym or time in the climbing wall. And maybe we've, Dr. Moore is in attendance with us tonight, we, we have seen a similar project with some similar features in other places and it also. Is great use for schools or team building or even businesses to be able to come and, and use it, so pretty wide open at this point. We haven't gotten down to the nitty gritty on the programming to that, to that level of detail yet, but. Definitely want it to be something that invites the most of the community in to be able to, to utilize it.
And do we think that the facility is like a, is it more of like a physical therapy rehab gym or like an all purpose gym the way? We have on the ridge currently with the Y that's actually getting a pretty significant expansion, I'm trying to see like what's, is there overlap between what we have and what's to come and perhaps there's room for all of it, but just.
Yeah, that's a fantastic question and actually something that we thought about with our pre forma and our business planning. We want to make sure this is something that doesn't already exist, it's not an anytime fitness, it's not a Y, we don't want to compete with those types of businesses. Which is why we're really focused on this artificial intelligence type equipment, there isn't any of that in this area. And so it's intended to be integrated with therapy, but also be able to be used in a more commercial setting as well.
Okay, great, second question I have and it kind of piggybacks on the like, community. Building aspects, what I would call these, the gym, the climbing wall, the, the dining facility. I think what makes the, the community hub we have in the Y building so. Impactful here in Snoqualmie is the ability to access it on foot and on vice, by bicycle and not have to drive there. And I, I like that, I like the fact that you guys are extending the trail into the. Into the facility, so that gives the option, I'm wondering though. If that's enough and I'm wondering if there are other access points on foot vis a vis the Panorama Apartments or other. Access to the facility, so folks just don't have to drive, I think like. What makes the Y so, I think, so much of a hub and a focal point, not that you're trying, not, and I understand you're doing different things, but to bring people there. I think really necessitates. Being able to do that and not in a car, you know, to get it, get it in people's routine, so I just wanted to throw that out there as just a piece of feedback. I think extending the trail is a great, like, great thing to do, I'm really glad that's part of this, but. I'm wondering if there's more access that we can give folks on the backside of the ridge and the apartments. To the, to the facility.
Yeah, there's actually amazing access already, so the Panorama, because this is right next to the hospital campus. The Panorama Apartments have a, a very great sidewalk and access right into the back of the hospital and these two will connect, so it'll. You'll be able to just come through that way, I don't, I don't know that we could provide any additional access, but you'll be able to access from both sides.
You bike commute every day, okay. Okay. Cool, that's great. I guess the last question I have, I think it's to piggyback on Commissioner Hurley's concern or question around traffic patterns and I think there's just so much unknown as it relates to. Not unknown, but obviously it's all kind of work in progress as it relates to the Highway 18, 90 interchange, that's a really problematic section of roadway where you have. Folks in the left lane kind of like queued up like for a very long time, folks in the right lane breezing by to get onto I-90 or to access the hospital. So I don't know what type of traffic study has taken place, maybe that's a question for Andrew or others. There, but I, I really think that's a part that needs some significant exploration and discussion. Given what we know about that area of roadway and all the change that's taking place there, right, that we haven't even, you know, begun to kind of wrap our arms around, so.
I can address that briefly, it's not my expertise, but we did have a traffic impact study done as part of our site. Site submittal and it has been submitted and updated per city comments for this second round. As part of the project, we are just off the, the bottom of the drawing here, putting in a new traffic signal at the intersection of Southeast 99th and Snoqualmie Parkway. It's been at least preliminarily coordinated with WashDOT in terms of buy off on that as a location and preferred. Location from both the city and WashDOT standpoint with queuing and sightline requirements there. I think that will actually significantly slow down traffic coming down the Parkway. Definitely experienced what you were describing of people flying down to get on the highway there. And as someone that comes from West Seattle area, it's convenient for me right now to just kind of roll out and straight on to the, on the on-ramp while everyone backs up. But that interchange or excuse me, the signal we think is going to help control traffic, the other. Stipulation that has come out of the site planning review is that the intersection here, the new site access, which is. Proximate to where the gravel entrance is currently, will be right in, right out only, so it will be limited in terms of its. In terms of impact, allowing people coming down from the ridge to access directly onto the site. On people exiting that needed to go back north to come out to Southeast 99th. Via Frontier and use the traffic light to make a left turn to access the road. Overall, we think this is an improvement into, into safety, we don't have control of what's happening at the. Interchange with 18 and 90, but we do think we are coordinating with it and communicating with those officials.
Yeah, that's fair enough, I think the coordination obviously is key, I think obviously with signal timing and things as it relates to that. New proposed light versus the light we have further down by the. By the overpass or whatever other treatments are taking place, I think another thing to think about is. In that section of roadway, you don't have the median, you don't have the like, the grassy median in between that I think acts as a. A kind of traffic calming measure where folks. You know, have, have, it, it's just a different, like, it's a different treatment.
More of the Boulevard.
Yeah, it's more of a Boulevard type treatment, so. All, all I know is that I think that's like. Again, one for like further consideration and study and coordination with WashDOT and obviously, as you mentioned earlier, like that's folks' first impression of Snoqualmie, so like. Getting greeting, getting greeted with a traffic jam that backs them up wherever is obviously not what you want and. You know, that's where the coordination with WashDOT comes into play, but I think. I guess the question, I, when you mentioned the coordination. Is that like, you're in touch with the teams that are constructing that or responsible for the interchange and like you're. At least the left hand knows what the right hand is doing.
We're getting closer to that, I don't know that the left hand knows entirely what the right hand is doing, what we are demonstrating so far is. Our proposed signalization in line with city of Snoqualmie standards and making sure that those line up and. Apply appropriately to WashDOT's development that's coming. Part of this would not include the extension of the Boulevard like landscape strips because we are using. We're doing some revisions to the channelization, which would allow us to make it left, dedicated left turn lanes in both directions. Should also have positive impacts on slowing down traffic because you are introducing an actual turning lane that increases people's awareness and heightens their. Attentiveness to that situation. It is not perfectly coordinated with WashDOT at this point, but we are working directly with them and. Our traffic engineers and the WashDOT traffic engineers are in coordination. Oh, I'm sorry, my.
Commissioner Murray Johnson?
Sure, can I just ask?
Please.
Well, at least point something out, so. My biggest concern that I've been hearing from our constituents in the city is that it wasn't that long ago. That many of us remembered that there was a light at the bottom of Snoqualmie Parkway. That every single car, every morning getting onto I-90 to go to work, had to line up there and it was a 15 minute wait. To try to get going there because of that light. So I've done the math. Over the last few years since I was put in, it saved me, since they got rid of that. Necessity for all of us to stop at that light, it saved me 13 and a half days of time sitting in my car. 13 and a half days over the last few years. So I am terrified of having a light there and causing us to go back to that. So I just wanted to share that perspective from what I've heard from the community and myself.
No, that's, that's, yeah, please.
If, if I could second that as well, the, the other concern I've got is that the, the traffic coming off the freeway. From, from the Seattle side and turning left under the, underpass and going up the hill. If there's an additional traffic light in there that is slowing things down, that's going to cause. Pipe, you know, backups onto the freeway, we're, we're seeing right now what it's doing for the people going south. With the road construction, everything, if that starts causing a similar kind of backup going north, that's also going to be extremely problematic, so. Again, it's going to require coordinating with the highway service or whoever's in charge of understanding what the impact of that will be. And making sure that we are not doing anything to increase traffic in that area. Obviously, safety is a paramount issue around the hospital, you know, it, it does drop down to 30 there, which takes a lot of people by surprise and. You know, there's a lot of people tapping the brakes and that kind of thing, but I would just be very concerned about it backing up traffic in both directions by putting another light in there, so. It may not be necessary to have it a full light going in all directions, there may be, you know, we can have a dedicated green on one, you know. Channel going in or something along those lines, but.
I appreciate, appreciate that, that concern, I defer a little bit to our traffic engineers on this one, on the expertise. The signal has been on the city's improvement plan for some time, waiting for it, the development that would. Trigger the number of trips to require it, so this, from the city's perspective, has been a. Expected in terms of an improvement in terms of overall traffic safety. That may. Include an additional stop, but I believe we can work through the, the timing to not be making it add 15 minutes a day to your, to commutes.
In either direction.
In, in either direction, understand the traffic concern for sure.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
I have one more, yeah, I would just say, just to kind of. I don't know, bookend this traffic piece, this is the one thing that's going to get people. Upset and agitated and showing up and making comment and. And I think I, we're trying to stay ahead of that, so I would say, and this is not just, this is, you know. Just from hearing from constituents, people we know, our neighbors, people who've driven that, you know, driven that section of roadway for a long time, so. It's just something to kind of, I would say. When we, if we have public comment and I'm assuming we will, right, there'll be a public comment period for this or how's that?
I believe staff, you're looking for a recommendation today from the commission, but the council will be the check on this, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just, I'm imagining this is something that might get people. You know, yeah, agitated.
I believe that we heard some feelings right away as we posted the preliminary drawings the first time. It is a known issue, we think we are making it better in the best interest, but we understand the concern.
All good, Vice Chair Kukup?
I just have a follow up. Unrelated to the traffic light. It just sparked for me thinking about the additional 300 staff members that will be joining. What is the plan for parking the, the staff and is it intended to be absorbed here or elsewhere? And just, I'm just kind of curious like to their experience.
Parking is intended to be absorbed here with some combination.
And PJ, I'll jump in on that too, we are a hospital and healthcare facility that runs 24/7, seven days a week and so when we add that many staff, it doesn't mean there'll be an additional 300 people. All the time, every single day, so between different shifts that we run and different days of the week, it won't have a full. Impact all at one time of the day, so just make sure I'm clear about that.
Yes, so the loading will not be all at once, we do believe that we are addressing the, the parking demands that we. Need here, the south or the west lot on this side is really dedicated to patient parking associated with the. More acute services including the surgery and diagnostic imaging. The upper parking areas for the more retail and ambulatory patients, so clinic visits. Probably more staff parking to this side here. Although we do see this additional row of parking on the outside here, probably having some balance between the hospital and. Clinic parking spaces. Clinic parking spaces. We're providing the. Required number of spaces.
Do you have a sense of like an actual number?
We do, it's 267. 266 is what we're providing right now.
Okay, that's helpful.
Total parking?
Yeah.
New total.
Incremental.
New parking.
Yep, yeah, in addition, what's on that?
In addition, and we are not losing stalls on the other side.
Yeah.
And if I could, Chair, I just want to elaborate on that a little bit, so. We have a peer traffic consultant that's reviewing their traffic study. Our planning staff will go through and make sure that the adequate parking is there, so. All of that is covered as part of your planning review and your site planning, so there is oversight on that.
Yeah, just given the location and how it's kind of pinned in, it's like it becomes a major issue, especially for for the people who work there. If they can't access directly and they have to start, you know, parking in some kind of annexed location, so. That's good, I'm good.
Thank you.
All right, best for last, right?
I'm ready.
No, and I'll try not to beat any dead horses. One question I had that did pertain to the parking, mostly because you don't know this, but. We just did work on the city of Snoqualmie's climate element, we're thinking about that leaning forward and sustainability and all that. So one question I had is, is there any, and and maybe Ms. Jensen, this is for you. But is there a plan for EV charging capacity?
Yes, we are, we're complying with the Washington State Energy Code, which requires. Kind of three levels of EV parking, so there are 20. Trying to remember this one initially, there's roughly 20 stalls that will be put in as EV parking initially. An additional 20 that have conduit prepared so that they can be brought online rather quickly. And then an additional 20, 20-ish that are available for EV charging and that has. The system has capacity to add them in the future, even though the conduits aren't pulled, so. There's three levels in terms of meeting that, there's a for day one level, a rather quick ramp up to day. Day two and then expansion capacity in the electrical service for day three.
Perfect, okay.
And that is all reviewed with the building permit.
And okay, awesome.
Does not come in yet.
Okay, mostly just curious, yeah, okay. We talked about the climbing wall, I think like from our perspective. Understanding like the realities of of, you know, paying for construction and operating costs and all that. Like I would think. It would be ideal if Snoqualmie gained an asset like you see, like one sees in Torgeson Park, right? Which is a no kidding publicly available climbing wall, right?
Yeah.
Recognizing the realities of this project, so that would just be feedback, not obviously not in the remit of the design review board, but.
No, I think that's a, that's a very valid comment and I think the hospital group can. Look at weigh in on looking on how those models can support it.
And then probably the last one I have is. And I've watched enough Project Runway to know that you don't want to be too matchy-matchy, right? But just looking at what's proposed. It will obviously be different from the existing Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, even though it's an extension. And so just curious what the thought process, was there any concerns?
I think, yeah, it's a good comment and we're, I picked the wrong line there, it was make it work, right? We're going to make it work. I think the the value here is recognizing, one, there are two very different buildings and different types of different eras, I think from a. Standout perspective, the hospital building with is a little bit more subdued and institutional. I think this building is really trying to look forward in its outlook and with that. That bold mission, trying to take something that says this is something different than what you've seen before and a different type of care experience. We think they can both exist on the same campus and they have. Good acknowledgement of one another in terms of their site relationship and movement of people, bikes, vehicles back and forth between those two. Without being entirely referential of the building type, so. I think we are doing a decent job here of representing something that's referential to the landscape and the the site that it is sitting on. And not so much a replication of the existing hospital.
Being anchored in the past, yeah. And maybe. Being there if and when the time comes to renovate existing hospital.
The hospital could certainly. Yeah, for my own self-interest, we could certainly renovate the hospital to think to think something along this, but I think there is. There are changing demographics in the area, right, there are folks moving in that are looking for something that more closely reflects their. Their work in different environments and the type of buildings and facilities that they're seeing. I think this one speaks in its form more to a building that is future looking than one that is. Stayed in a more historical setting.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. Oh, yeah, Vice Chair Coco.
I'm just looking at this rendering here, it says extra rendering from Southwest.
We labeled that incorrectly, that's from the southeast.
Okay, that was the question, so that's. We're looking.
You are basically from the entry, from the primary side access drive here, so this entry here and now we've moved ourselves. Forward, so this is Snoqualmie Parkway on this side here. The lot that you are just seeing on this side is the upper lot to the right when we were looking in, so if I. Navigated back here for you. I think. Going the wrong direction.
The main reason I'm asking is just from like a heat load on that. That glass, if if that was southwest facing, that would just be a sauna. Just relabel it on the plan.
It is actually, yeah, it's it's on the southeast, southeast side, it will get southern exposure, it is actually not quite as much. Sun or quite as much solar exposure as it looks like if you look over the entire south facade, we're actually. Fairly restrained in terms of the amount of sun, this is a fair bit here, we do anticipate there being cooling loads associated with with that. But it's also a fairly large volume, which can take. Can take some more fluctuation in the mechanical loads.
Forgive me, you all jogged my memory.
Still best for last.
So, yeah, exactly, no lie. Building off of the discussion on essentially connectivity, right, and pedestrian friendly and all that. And this might be for staff, but. When we look at figure two or the overhead of the whole project.
Yeah.
You got figure two right there. My question is, there is not existing sidewalk, once you get to that extreme. I guess that's southern end of Snoqualmie Parkway, yeah.
That's, that's correct. We are taking the, we are proposing taking the side access trail across the wetlands here. There is, this entire. Edge along Snoqualmie Parkway is a current stream, an extension of the B10. Wetland, and so part of our effort to minimize the impact on the local environment is to make the crossing at the narrowest point, bring the trail on the site. Come along and then extend it along our site access driveway and then down to Southeast 99th internal. So rather than going across another wetland and existing retaining. Stormwater area, we're bringing them onsite to support that more community connection.
No, no, I get that.
I'm sorry.
Trail, yeah, no, that's great, that's great detail on the trail and I appreciate that. I guess, and and maybe you would counter like this would be against the wetland, but. Particularly looking at figure two, we see a sidewalk, you know, parallel with the road that ultimately feeds into the facility.
Oh, I think I understand what you're.
Yeah, but there's nothing along the parkway, I don't know if there's a plan, yeah.
This extension here, this was a bit of a. Rendering piece that we had submitted a few weeks before, we have updated the trail extension here, so. Initial expectation was that we would have to extend the sidewalk. Out to this corner, we have since in coordination with city comments been extending the trail in and not having, not having this little piece here. So if I, I'm going to walk over. What we are actually proposing is essentially this comes off, this bit of sidewalk goes away and the trail comes in and around so that there is no sidewalk bringing you back out.
Yeah, you see, that's really interesting, right, because like what I'm focused on is Dewey. Is the plan ultimately to build sidewalk connectivity? That proposed sidewalk along the parkway so that pedestrians could literally walk from Safeway. Into the hospital on a sidewalk. Obviously, also with the option of a trail, does that make sense?
I do think I've, I I do follow you right now and I went the wrong direction again, if I go backwards here. To the plan right now, the way that we have kind of, the way that we have looked at it. There is not other connectivity along this this south end, so. While this sidewalk was still being shown, it's being proposed to go away and just be the drive access. So that we can bring someone in using the trail access from further north at safe, if they were coming in from Safeway, we think they would be much better off using the. The trail access, which is an eight to 10 foot wide trail, 12 in some places to come on and come onto the site versus coming. Down along the street and coming in, am I describing that?
A paved trail or or?
Yes, it is a paved trail.
There's not really anything else down that road.
Yeah.
Besides the hospital, so as long as they can access that, I would think it would be okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, are those your thoughts? Okay.
My only question, if if you're pulling that path inward is just. Not excessive lighting, but safety lighting.
Yes, we we did have a requirement that is a lit path and the parking lot will be lit and illuminated. Excuse me, illuminated along that portion as well.
Okay. All right, please.
So you've been talking to the introductory slides this whole time, we actually don't have a copy of those, can you provide those?
The introductory, certainly we can provide the intro, you're speaking of these slides here?
Yes, yeah, like your first five slides, we've been.
Yes, we.
Most of the time, yeah.
Didn't provide them as they were contextual slides, but we can certainly provide those for you. We can provide the whole presentation, yeah, okay.
Awesome, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, I guess we'll turn over to Mr. Levens.
Do you get to come up here?
Good evening, Commissioners, it is a pleasure to be here with you in person tonight. My name is Andrew Levens, I'm a land use planning consultant. Assisting the city process the various permits that are required for this overall application. Tonight, we're here to discuss specifically the design review application.
Thanks, Chair.
No, you're fine, you're fine. And I'll just go ahead and walk you through the staff report that we developed. That I was evaluating the proposal that we have been discussing tonight. So PJ has already given you a lot of great detail and imagery about the proposal. I wanted to touch on some additional details. Regarding the procedure surrounding this design review. Since it is unusual for the planning commission acting in its role as the design review board to review projects on Snoqualmie Ridge. That is because for the most part, projects on Snoqualmie Ridge are reviewed administratively for compliance with the design guidelines. And development standards that are adopted in the Snoqualmie Ridge governing documents. However, you will note, and it's already been discussed a little bit, that Resolution 907, which was adopted back in 2009. Did kind of reorient the, it amended the. Snoqualmie Ridge master plan for this area, it's in, this parcel is located in Snoqualmie Ridge 2. Which is a primarily residential master plan. However, Snoqualmie Ridge 1 was a mixed use plan that had a pretty significant commercial component as well as multi-family and single family plats. So what the council did back in 2009, when the owner of this property came to. Request an amendment, the, to allow that this parcel be used. For an alternative purpose than was originally envisioned in the Snoqualmie Ridge 2 mixed use final plan. They incorporated the business park development standards from Snoqualmie Ridge 1. And applied it to this site in Snoqualmie Ridge 2. So if you have had a chance to review some of the, our attachments 1 and 2 to the staff report. It's a criteria analysis matrix that reviews the project. For compliance with the citywide design guidelines that are applicable to this project and other projects in the city. As well as the business park design, architectural design guidelines. That applies specifically to Snoqualmie Ridge 1, but in this case also to this parcel S21 in Snoqualmie Ridge 2. Overall, staff has reviewed the project and. Does and found it to be consistent with all of the guidelines that were in the citywide requirements as well as the business park requirements. The development does step down from Snoqualmie Parkway following existing topography. And thus minimizes the impact of its mass on the public realm from Southeast 99th as well as Snoqualmie Parkway. We view, we believe that the view from Snoqualmie Parkway will likely be the most significant vantage that this. Building will be seen from, from the general public and also believe that it's appropriately oriented to Snoqualmie Parkway to. I guess maximize the level of architectural detail facing the public realm there. And like we touched on, the materials that have chosen do break up the overall mass, but allow it to. Remain uniform and cohesive and we believe that it complements the existing Snoqualmie Hospital structure that is to the west. In terms of scale and overall design, so as a result. Staff is recommending approval of the. Project for design review. And the next steps which are omitted from this report, but the next steps from the, for the planning commission tonight. Could be to approve, to approve with conditions or to deny the application for design review.
Ready for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mrazek?
No, no, I'm good.
All good, okay, Vice Chair Coco?
None for me.
Commissioner Hurley?
None further for me.
Commissioner Murphy?
When you said approve with conditions, like what type of conditions or what's within scope of of conditions?
Sure, so to approve with conditions could be, for example, if the design review board found that the project was out of compliance. With a provision, a design review, or one of the criteria that the project is analyzed by. They could recommend modifications or I guess condition modifications to the project. That could bring it into compliance that could allow it to be approved tonight.
And then does the. Does the council then approve this? Is that, is that, is that the next layer of approval or or not?
So there is no council approval associated with this project. The the site plan permit, clearing and grading permit. And lot line adjustment that are also associated with this proposal are all administrative approvals. The design review approval that is requested tonight is the only. Discretionary approval that this proposal is seeking.
Got it, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, I think that's an important. Distinction that I don't think I quite had my arms wrapped around, but. Yeah, no further questions for me.
And just to put like. Examples and pushback if you disagree, like the question was raised about the HVAC and the elevator. If they hadn't had, you know, the cladding or whatever the right term for that is, right? That would be a condition that we could request. But in this case, it exists. Okay. I don't think I have any questions and. So really it comes down, you know, we can. Open it up for any more discussion if anyone thinks there are conditions that might be applied. Otherwise, I'm happy to move that we approve the application as submitted.
Are the traffic concerns a conditional thing we can put on it or is that outside our purview?
I would imagine that's outside of our purview.
That's correct, that will be reviewed during the site plan. And CIPA review.
Really good.
A nice second.
Okay. Did you, were you about to chime in?
Well, I was just going to say, looking at.
Well, I was just gonna say, looking at the analysis, I mean, we're, our discretionary areas are really the style and scale of the building and to the existing hospitals, also quality standards. And from that aspect, discretionary, yeah, I think, I think we approve it, yeah, unless we can find something that's outside of that.
Yeah, great, great, great summation. Like, staff's done the work, it's within the DRB criteria. I think the value was the feedback on the community's concerns on, on transportation impacts in particular, but everything else seems to be in order. Okay, I think we're in a good spot, so I move that we approve uh the application as submitted with, without conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, staff. All right, and we scheduled that just in case you wanted to, to go ahead and depart uh without hearing the next item, so don't, don't feel obligated. Um, okay.
Don't be mad.
Because it's gonna be a long one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, okay, so next uh item of business is uh Snoqualmie Municipal Code 17.35, Historic Overlay Color Palette Presentation and Discussion. And so to set the, the stage for this one, this is follow-up staff uh work to the color palette based off of the feedback received in, in the last uh Planning Commission uh session on this. So Ms. Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and that is correct. Um, after we heard your comments and public testimony at the last meeting, Andrew Love went back and did a little more work to bring back to you tonight. Uh, I think we're gonna propose that we go through another round of these comments tonight, and then perhaps we'll be ready to have a public hearing. I think it would be good to have a public hearing and be able to solicit comments from our downtown business owners, just to get that public participation going. I know Nicole Weeby sent out uh email last week and let the business owners know that we had the meeting tonight. I'm anticipating that more would show up if we had the public hearing too, so I, I'd propose to let Andrew, Andrew Love, sorry, I almost slipped, start with his presentation tonight and give you more information that he's gathered and see where we, where we land on that tonight. So Andrew?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Let me share my screen here. Can you see the presentation okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just put together a shorter presentation uh today. So basically, uh, we're here to meet again on the uh historic color palette options. And in the last meeting, uh, we went over the background of why we're here. So uh Chapter 1735 uh currently requires historical design review on some applications, and the Planning Commission has been overseeing that um in the recent, in recent times. A Type One permit is required to change exterior paint colors within this, the historic overlay areas, whereas a Type Two variance is required when proposing a color not included in the approved palette. And this has kind of become an issue with some downtown business residents because, I'm sorry, residents and business owners, because there are only four different options when it comes to what you can paint your, the main part of your building and a particular accent and trim color that will, has to match the one, the, the main building color that you pick. Um, there is uh some additional options that you can kind of mix and match, um, but they're very limited. Um, and the main color cannot really be mixed and matched with like the different accent colors. So just to give you a sense, and this is a kind of a refresher slide from my last presentation, but there are two different uh historic overlay zones in the city. It's a little confusing and we're gonna have to work to um potentially update this chapter in the future. But for right now, I know that it's important um for our uh community members to address the color issue um at, at this moment. And so there's the Meadowbrook Historic District Overlay Zone, which um I, as I understand, historically was um kind of a separate settlement. And then the Downtown Historic District Overlay Zone, and both of those are outlined in black. The orange is the Downtown Historic Commercial Landmark District, which was created when the city first entered into an interlocal agreement with the King County um Historic Preservation to basically make it um just to quickly sum it up, basically to um, you know, half grant opportunity, opportunities for historic properties uh in the city. So what we heard in the last meeting, um, Planning Commissioners appreciated different aspects of several of the cities that were presented, uh, the ways that they go about their historic uh downtown areas and what colors they allow. And particularly, the City of Carnation was uh discussed quite a bit. And this is due to the visual examples that were provided, which you can see on the right. So they allow different types of earth tones, neutrals, dark saturated colors, and they only allow bright colors for accent and trim. Now, the consensus was that even though generally people were favorable for the way that this is laid out, uh, the city would benefit from keeping specified colors options rather than leaving it up to the interpretation of um staff, basically, or the interpretation of the applicant, I suppose. And also, they, uh, the Planning Commissioners, from what I kind of gathered, were not really in favor of allowing bright colors as trim uh or accent colors, at least not super bright neon type of colors. So this kind of lip gave a um, kind of uh, you know, directed our options to looking at different cities that have specific color, colors that they utilize. And uh two of the main examples that we found in Washington was, uh, one of them was the City of Ordin. And uh this was um presented to Planning Commission last time. This is, we're looking at basically their uh palette of different colors that they approve in their historic area. And they particularly allow colors from uh Sherman Williams' Exterior Color Preservation Palette and the Kelly Moore Historical Color Collections. Kelly Moore is no longer around. But I was able to uh pull together some options from Sherwin-Williams. I'll go ahead to the next uh example, which is the City of Port Townsend. They actually use 135 different colors from Benjamin Moore's uh Color Preview Collection. Uh, the full collection of this has 100, I'm sorry, 1,232 options. They specify that uh if you prefer to use another brand of paint, ask for a computer, uh, computer match of the Benjamin Moore color chip. And I know that this was a important um for many of the Commissioners, and um Councilmember Johnson uh had mentioned that it was potentially problematic to be referenced a uh particular paint um company. So I thought that was interesting to include, and um I do have a table of the complete list of colors if anybody is really interested, but it's also available on their website. So from this, um, I tried to research some just kind of generic non-paint, brand-related historic color schemes or palettes, and I didn't really find much. So I did have to kind of go to the major paint um websites and see what paint companies had historic uh kind of color palette options. And it was kind of narrowed down to Sherwin-Williams and Benjamin Moore. So, and coincidentally, those are the two companies that Port Townsend and Ordin kind of utilizes. And I know the Planning Commissioners were uh more or less okay, seemed like they were okay with the Ordin example. So this is, these would be colors from the Sherwin-Williams Historic Colors uh Palette. And um if you, if it's an attachment one, a full list of those colors, and we can go back to the slide when, if we have discussion, but um then next, the Benjamin Moore Historical Colors Collection, uh, this is um quite a lot more colors than the Sherwin-Williams option. Let me see here, it is 191 different colors. And we have, so this is just the one slide of them, and then there's the second slide that has these colors as well. So after doing some research and hearing from, you know, kind of trying to strike a balance between having limited colors, but allowing a more flexibility with what business owners can do, the, the staff recommendation would be to either approve the Benjamin Moore Color Palette or the Sherwin-Williams Palette, or even both. And we can talk more about this uh certainly after um this presentation. And uh that concludes my part of the presentation, but I know that um, I'm sure we'll have a uh nice discussion about the different options and the Planning Commission can also, you know, reject my suggestions. So you're not limited to these options, but these were the best options I could find that kind of provided some structure, that would provide some structure to what colors could be chosen for downtown while also offering some flexibility, so. I will open up.
We're closing the questions. Yeah. Commissioner Mrazek?
Setting aside that these are really uh historical kind of flat doll colors for a second. Didn't we also request that we get Pantone numbers? I mean, certainly Sherwin-Williams or Benjamin Moore has something other than their own reference numbers, because, I mean, even mentioned one of the, the companies went out of business, uh, yeah, all, all of these things, what's that? Yeah, Kelly Moore, so um it'd be nice to have Pantone reference numbers in addition to the Sherwin-Williams or Benjamin Moore. I, I think that'd be a good idea. And um as, as a general comment on the palette, um, I know we said we didn't want to go crazy, but wow, these are really doll colors. I, I think, I think maybe, you know, maybe we could open it up a little bit, so that's just my personal thought on that. Okay.
And actually, I'm just gonna jump in because that's a, that's a great point. And I think one thing I would point out is, and the, 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 the research very much appreciated, right? But do note, when we look at the Benjamin Moore Historical Collection, that's historical for the United States, for North America, it says writ large. It's not necessarily historical for Pacific Northwest, historical for, for this region, right? So, you know, maybe take a critical eye as you look at those colors from that lens. Sorry about that. Vice Chair Koka?
I agree. Um, I didn't like the neon colors for, was it Carnation? There is an interesting desire for what looks like, you know, when my kids were little, it would be like, how healthy is your kid based on the color of their poop? Like shades of diarrhea um that I'm not really interested in. I want to give options, but I also think if we just put this all out, it's just as confusing and not helpful. So I thought what we were gonna do was something along the lines of, was it um, was it City of Renton that had some guidelines, like, like a darker this, and then you can do like a lighter trim, and like you can pick in these ranges, right? Like you can mix and match these different color options, but like a general aesthetic that we're trying to have architecturally for the downtown historic area. I thought that was one of our feedbacks that I feel like would be really helpful here, to give a little bit of criteria to what we're looking for. And in looking at Commissioner Mrazek's sheet, um, or laptop there, yeah, like maybe picking a tope that we're okay with, and then more of the vibrant, of the vibrant colors that are into the, the blues and the, you know. The other thing too is I don't want to just be open-ended where it's like rainbow downtown. Um, I think it's helpful to offer some, uh, some colors, but offset with some neutrality, so that it's like, kind of put your flair where you want it, but don't do all flair.
You sound.
Well, like, I think like the awning, the trim, the door, um, potentially, like if there's some other, I mean, I'd be open to suggestions there, but, you know, do we want the buildings to be in a general color palette and they all do like a white trim that makes them kind of cohesive? Or do we want them to, you know, I, there's different ways you can go about that, but yeah. My general thoughts on this is it's way too many and far too many could be described as diarrhea.
It's, it's 299.
Diarrhea?
Colors.
Total.
Right.
Yeah. And so, and then like, how many variations are there of this? And, you know, I'll be honest, like, most people aren't particularly skilled at color matching, and there's some really specific rules to this.
Of course, we'd use a different analogy.
I'm sorry, my son is seven, so it's nothing but open fart jokes in my house. Yeah.
No, that, that's a great point, because I think like, so, so two things I would say to what you outlined, right? Which is, one, I think the feedback we, we provided last session was, we did want to see specific colors, right? But I, so.
Sorry, specific colors or specific color combinations?
Specific colors.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but I think, and maybe this was part of the feedback, right? Like, the solution is probably hybrid in that you provide style guidelines, like you described, and you have the specific palette, because we said, we wanted specific colors because we want to prevent variances, but we also don't want, you know, to completely lose control, right?
Yeah.
And certainly one extreme of that would be 299 options of, of colors. And to your point, not everyone's gonna get the combinations right. So the second thing I thought of is, for another iteration of this, maybe we still keep, like right now, under the code, they provide those rec, those four, those three or four mandatory combinations. So maybe combinations are provided, no longer mandatory, but as a style guide, for lack of a description or whatever, to got, to, to reinforce whatever is outlined in the style guidelines, that would accompany the specific colors.
Do we have a slide that shows um our current color combos that are restricted in that way?
Last packet, um.
Do you have the current color combos pulled up, Andrew?
I don't have them in the slideshow, but I can find them.
I, I feel like we could almost do something as less dramatic as, like, within these colors, propose and, and staff has approval, authority on how they potentially use them to highlight the architectural accents or, so not going 299, but keeping it to like 12-ish colors.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, process-wise, like, um, we're trying to solve the request variances piece, right?
Yeah.
The, the staff evaluation piece would still exist, whether we make changes or don't make changes, right?
But the procedural complication of it having to be considered a variance in terms of permitting, cost, time, would that be lowered? Because that, that's important.
It would be lowered with an ex, with clear guidance and, and expansion of clothes. Yeah, yeah.
Staff can feel like it's within the, right?
A hundred percent. And I guess what, so what I'm saying is like, the develop, the Community Development Director would review the application and be able to deny, you know, a red, red, red combinat, requested combination, even if all three reds came from the approved palette.
Shades of brown?
Yeah, or, or brown.
One was the staff, the other was the um local retail who wanted the ability to have a little more pop than our current uh standards provided.
Yep.
And it was a little more pop. I don't think it was too off the wall.
Right.
It was pink.
Well, that was.
Pastels, I think, is.
Yeah, but I think that pink is actually historically accurate. Yeah, right. Dusted rose. Dusted rose. Um. Yeah.
So An- Andrew's got the.
Okay.
Current colors, which I I would, I'm a little nervous about keeping it to twelve because I feel like that's what we have now.
E- except it's not twelve, it's right, it's four sets of colors.
A little more flexibility.
Yes, yeah.
What we were talking about was the idea of could we could we broaden that to, I think the number seventy-five came up. Um could we broaden it to a larger palette of cob- colors, but what I'm hearing now is it sounds like more like we want a set of color combinations.
Or even the approach could be, the the approach could be specific as. Exterior main feature colors, trim.
Right.
And awnings or whatever awnings fall into indoors and and all that, right? Um. And that's how we could achieve.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'd also be curious to hear from the business owners, like how they feel about that, like. Good thing? I I don't know, right? Like, I and I think. Uh present company excluded because you actually have an ar- an artistic eye. Um just keeping in mind it has to prevent bad combos also. I give clear direction, like, cause that's the worst, is if someone's like, oh, I'm so in love, we have four shades of brown, you know?
Yeah.
And then we're like, this is not gonna work. That's gonna be frustrating to them, so. Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, that is.
Uh, did you have anything else?
Not really, no. I I it we just, we just need to find a solution here. We we need to find something that I I suspect is not gonna make everybody happy, but it makes nobody unhappy. Right? It doesn't have to be something that addresses every every possibility or 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 every person's. Um desire in this, but but is is got more variation than what we have now so that people can. Give themselves a little bit more variation and and express themselves.
Well, and I and and my goal with how we closed the last review of this was. I was hopeful that it'd be like perfectly clear, like what we were hoping for or whatever and. Like clearly, Mr. Love like did a ton of work on this, I think. So I do want to make sure we conclude tonight. With very specific guidance, right? So like, to me, that means, do we want specific colors? Yes, no? Do we want suggested or mandatory pairings? Yes, no? Do we want it broken down? How the color we use, exterior trim, et cetera? Yes, no? Um, just so that. We can still move forward to the public hearing and then really, um I think. The feedback that we'll be looking for during that public hearing is, do we have the proposed colors right? Does any of that need tweaking? Uh and do we have essentially? Uh what we've outlawed, what we've, what will require as mandatory, is that right? Do we need to adjust on there so that the flexibility is there? Those are my thoughts, but forgive me, Commissioner.
I I agree with that. Um I I I think it. We're gonna have to pick one or the other. It's either we're saying that there are these specific colors, these specific combinations. Or this is the palette, you're allowed to choose what you want between us. Um I mean, I I could see us doing some kind of middle-of-the-road thing, saying that if you have any of the darker hues in this cluster. Then the trim or the or the secondary colors need to be a lighter hue. There needs to be a certain amount of contrast between them. I could see us potentially doing something along those lines, um but. We're obviously in the in an incredibly restricted set now. I've got to think that anything we do that that widens that up is going to help. It's just a matter of how far we want to go.
And one one thing we took, one change we talked about last time was at a minimum saying. Adhere to those cu- if you did nothing else, but you said adhere to those colors. But uh it doesn't necessarily have to be in the four proposed combinations.
Yes.
That alone will widen it up, doesn't make room for pink, right? And so that's why we still want to potentially make some other adjustments, but.
Yeah, so. O- one thing about Carnation that I liked, and I agree, the color's a little bit wild there, but they took one of those, so take the accent, right, or the trim. And said, on this one here, we're gonna give a lot more leeway. Uh you could keep these and you can even have mixed, because I mean, these colors are really. You know, I I can see why the local business is like, well, gee whiz, thanks, you know, you got brown and brown and beige and gray.
Gray.
Um. Give a little bit of a wide range on the accent. And maybe that'd be enough, right? I mean, I I think that would open it up and you would still have the judgment of, does it match? Is it is it too wild? But they do, you give them at least something that they could pop on top of these colors and maybe have more than four options, but anyway. I I I go after the accent or the trim, particularly the accent and see if we could really make that. Um where they could they could shine. It's still subject to some judgment, but at least give more options.
Commissioner Murphy, apologies.
Yeah, I mean, and I, we got a late email, so I recommend everyone look at this and we'll, we can talk about it next week as well. Uh from Richard Anderson, who runs the Rich um Northwest Railway Museum. Um and I think we should definitely come. With some sort of like loosely buttoned-up solution to take to public comment, but be not. Too beholden to that and really like, let's hear from the historic preservationists, let's hear from the business community and let's make sure that like. Historic preservation is front and center versus like, you know. All of us kind of playing, I mean, just as me, this is me talking, like amateur designer, that's not me. That's not who I am, that's not my background, might be others on this on this commission, but I think when we hear from. Uh folks around historic preservation and. Um looking at, you know, the subjectivity rather uh as it relates to the specific vendors' color pa-. Color scheme, which changes, you know, every couple of years, every five years, ten years, right? And I think that's what you mentioned in terms of having some of the tone, um some of some of some of the tones there. Um another thing to think about is um. Uh and this is something that uh he mentioned in this in this email, which I, you know, encourage everyone to read, but. Um consulting the King County um Historic Preservation Committee, apparently there's some inter-local agreement. That we have with them to certify certify the appropriateness of of colors and having that be a part of the procedure. As it relates to um which colors are truly like kind of of the historic character.
Is this a recent, I'm sorry.
It's it's in our, it just hit our inbox, it's, yeah. To get it included ahead of the public.
So um, yeah, I actually had a conversation with uh Mr. Anderson about this because. Andrew, in doing some research, reached out to King County Historic Preservation Board. Who recommended that we didn't require that.
Specific.
We speci- we specify specific colors. So Andrew, do you want to speak to that a little more? I know you covered that in one of your presentations.
Yeah, sure. So the King County Historic Preservation Staff recommends to not have required color palette at all. That we would say these are the recommended colors, but you can basically paint whatever you want. So I'm, think it's kind of challenging to come up with. What colors you find appropriate because we don't really know what was painted each individual building and. What is appropriate for Snoqualmie may differ, you know, differently for every commissioner. And I will add that this, I don't know if my screen is still being shared, I can't tell. Okay, but I, uh what I gather from this is that it's possible that this, these colors were. These colors were um decided with a grant, since I do see the Four Culture logo. Um and SMR Architects and I will do my very best to, you know. Figure out what the best colors would be for the city, but I. I'm, I also feel a little limited with the amount of time, you know, I have available to help Mona. And I think that these colors were decided upon, you know, using. Grant funding and potentially there was some research involved and. I guess I'm just trying to say that I don't. I guess that would be a a little bit of a loss to try to figure out a better. Option, but what I'm hearing is something that's more, a little more flexible than the current. Palette, but not so flexible as what was recommended.
Well, Andrew, in your research, when you talk to the um, when you talk to King County, like what what's like? Uh and forgive me if this was in like uh last week's packet, but or last time's packet, but like what's the process look like in terms of it? Because they they have to determine the historic appropriateness of a certain color, it can't really just be anything and. There's obviously some discretion they're using. Uh do you have a sense as to how they involve themselves in municipalities? Um kind of historic preservation color decisions, or is that not really how it works?
That's a really good question. I am, I'm, you know, trying to learn more about historic preservation. As I'm, you know, learning more about Snoqualmie and trying to, you know, digest this. Um all of this information and um I, what I can tell you is that I'm going to be attending the first. King County Landmarks Commission meeting um this Thursday evening. So that'll definitely give me a better sense of how they conduct their reviews. I do know that they look into, you know. When they're reviewing um a potential landmark, which would then be eligible for different types of grants and whatnot. I do know that they look into, you know, original materials and they they favor um. You know, preservation of a of original materials before replacement and whatnot. As far as like colors of things go, I'm not sure. But I can definitely look into that further.
I mean, i- in this email, I just, I just kind of waded through it. Uh the way I read this, the way Rich, the reason Richard says he recommends we do not select a color palette. Is that they should be painted in the colors they wore. So in historical restoration, it dig through and find an embedded paint color and go, ah. This is the original one from nineteen forty, so therefore the station needs to be brown, it always needs to be this brown. Regardless whether it's in there or not, I think that's the point. So he's saying, in historic buildings, if you're gonna keep it historic. You know, you keep it as tight to whatever it was as you can when it first was put up.
That's what you're saying. Seeking a correct answer, like.
And I think we're being asked to um give a little bit more thing to that.
Uh, Councilor, one one second, let me recognize uh Ms. Weeby, please.
Thank you so much, Planning Commissioners. Um I just want to uh make a point, maybe on behalf of the businesses that I often represent. It is a historic district, but there's quite a blend of businesses and the time periods of when those buildings. Were built. The Depot is a very different era of a building. Than maybe the railroad building that was built in two thousand. Or the building that which Ashley from June and Jim came and spoke last week that. That house is probably, I don't know, sixties or seventies that it was built. So I just wonder if. You know, we can, you can apply different standards in some ways to whether it's officially a historic landmark like the Depot. Or something that was built in more modern day. I I think it's um. Nuance isn't quite the word, but I do think that there is a bit of a difference of all of the buildings in the historic district.
Yeah, the only thing I would say to that, though, is if we look at the code outlining. The responsibilities of this design, of the Design Review Board for the Historic District, it specifies. That the standards to be applied are uh what the buildings looked like essentially during World War Two.
Yeah, nineteen forty, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? And so, I mean, that's decently specific, although we don't have personal experience in that time period and that's what makes it hard. Uh.
Yeah.
But that should be the coordinating, that should be the coordinating standard between the different eras of of buildings. Per the existing code. Um, did you have anything else, Ms. Weeby? Okay.
No, just to say, I I think you guys are on the right track and that is um, there's definitely a place between. No leeway between these four pa- color palettes and two hundred and twenty-three colors. I just throw that number out there. But I I think to give it um some some room. Um more than what we've got here is is really what the business owners are hoping for. I I don't think they. Anticipate to come out of this with two hundred and twenty-three colors, but. There there needs to be more leeway and there needs to be a little a little more um range in colors. And still maintaining that that integrity of the historicness.
Very much, appreciate it.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, a few things. One is, uh if the building is uh in, if it was built in that uh period. Making it an historically significant building and the color is known, then perhaps we have our answer. Uh if the color is not known, then uh maybe that opens that up for that uh particular building to. Some interpretation here, but this is definitely a difficult uh needle to thread. Um because uh I know that I am not going to be uh claiming that I am an artist. And am qualified to look at various uh colors for historic buildings and do the proper matching. I certainly don't have that expertise and I'm not sure how how many of you folks feel like you are in that category, maybe some of you are not. Um, so I I I wanted to just throw out here, perhaps um. The way it could work is you have one of those um more expanded palettes than what we currently have. Uh, something more in the range of the Sherwin-Williams in terms of number of uh of patterns. And then um as far as the actual matching of do these colors go together or not. Uh that might require uh having an expert uh come in and actually uh. Provide a study that uh does that and that could cost money and stuff like that and it starts to get. Um to be uh quite a large animal to figure out what that exactly is. Um, so I I I guess that's all to say that um uh. Trying to to tell the businesses which color palettes work and expanding it from those that already exist could be a heavy lift. Um to try to actually get the expertise. Uh and the confidence that yes, these are actually colors that we feel like can and should be legislated as full palettes. Um, so do with that what you will.
No, no, I mean, that's super helpful. I think we have to recognize our limitations, both.
Right.
You know.
I guess that's what I'm getting.
Experiential and and financial um.
I think that's also why some of these other examples, though, they've already done this work. Right? Some of these other towns have already done this for us. There's some of these that have different approaches to them. Um it it kind of makes me wonder whether we could just put three or four of these up for public comment. You know, like like pick the ones that we believe, I mean, obviously the thing with Carnation with the the bright green and pink and everything like that, let's cut that out now, but. Are are there a few examples out of this that we could say, can we, can we put a couple of these up there and say, i- is this? Solving the problem for everybody, you know?
Yeah, let's check.
I I'm getting ready to paint our kitchen cabinets, so I've actually recently, yeah, fifty shades of brown and um. Uh they have these types of combinations the paint companies make that look nice together. Um so it's, I don't know that we really need to, you know, get a third-party consultant involved if we wanted to just. Kind of to your point, widen it up. Um you know, I think if we had m- many. Palettes that people could pick from, or maybe there's like a variation, I mean. I I would be interested to know what the business owners really want, um because we can, we can certainly do a bunch of different things. But I think too many variables in the equation gets complicated.
Yeah, and so I think. Let me, let me do a pulse check here, both for the commission and the staff, like on the way forward, right? Just to kind of keep it focused. Um, I'm hearing from this end that there'd be great benefit to just getting public feedback, right? But then I think the question would be, do we want feedback on everything that's proposed here? Do we want to refine what we give feedback on? Okay, so I think Mr. Love and staff would probably appreciate. What are the specific things we want refined and that we want, would like. Uh feedback on on the next sess- session and then we'll probably have to have a one more, at least one more session. Post-public feedback uh to kind of hopefully settle through that. Does that seem like a good spot?
What I'm hearing is that you'd like to narrow the amount of colors down, so maybe we don't need. You know, twenty shades of brown or twenty shades of green, but kind of narrow it to a lighter green and a darker green. And a lighter brown and a darker brown, maybe a a dusty rose and a um. A mauve or something, you know, just to, is that what I'm hearing and maybe have more like. a mauve or something, you know, just to, is that what I'm hearing and maybe have more like twenty to twenty-five colors to choose from. I, I have one.
These other towns have already done. I mean, it feels a little bit like we're reinventing the wheel here.
Yes, I think so too.
The, the ordering one, which has got recommended color combinations. It's got one, two, three, four, five, six by four, you know, so twenty-four, uh, colors to choose from here. Five sets of recommended combinations and then some, some ones here as well. Um, and they're all historical color palettes. Um, and then we've got the carnation one, which again, again, let's put a, a very solid red X next to that one. But, you know, a- again, it's, it's, it's providing a, a, a color set that are historically based. And that are, I believe, sort of what we're looking for here. And it's not too many different choices. And it, 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 again, it, it takes some of the, um, the burden off, off of, um, anybody who is having to prove these things where it either meets this or it doesn't. You know, when, when we start getting into, does this meet this or not? And it's too vague to, uh, be able to make that determination quickly, then we start adding into, we're, we're adding variances and, and, and people are getting subjective judgment calls and, and we, we need to make it as, as objective and succinct as possible.
So are you proposing then that we would just whole scale, uh, assume what's, what ordering has, for example? You just?
I, I'm saying with a slight modification, we could take the ordering one and the carnation one and potentially put those up for public comment and say, this is what other towns are doing. They've already solved this problem. Um, and that they have more options available than we currently do now. We'd like to expand these options, but still maintain the historical integrity. Um, this is what two other similar towns have done. We'd like to adopt a similar practice.
You have feedback on that?
Yeah, I, I, and I might be the one, the person who disagrees with that. I think, um, matching depression era American colors is not necessarily what the business owners are telling us. I understand it's historical. What I'm saying, um, maybe don't use the, the, you know, wear some green that you don't like, but give the business owners one area to make some pop. And, and, and you can define the pop, so it's not so radical, uh, on the trim, right? And, uh, and just give them that one area. And because if it's the trim and you say, well, we don't like what we did, then we can go do that. But give them one area where they can do a little bit more than just the depression era colors that we grew up with, right? Uh, I think that would give them what they want and we wouldn't go too far afield. So, I might be the one, only person who thinks that.
Vice Chair Kirkup?
I, I, I like that plan. I think, you know, if we put like something like this in front of the business owners, they're going to be like, oh geez, you know, giving some palette and then also, uh, when I, when I was an architect and I used to stand up and do the design review board presentations, we called it the ball of yarn and we'd give the planning commission the ball of yarn. And we'd identify like, but this, we just don't know how to solve that one piece. Can you pick a color?
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's kind of what we're doing here, which is like with the trim, show your personality, right? But don't show it within the on green wall. Yeah.
Do it within, you know, tastefulness, but give them, yeah, give them a little bit of more.
Yeah.
And if it's not exactly historical.
I think that's fine. As long as it's tasteful. That's where I think, and then that's very subjective, but I, I, I like that plan.
That's where, that's where it kind of falls down.
It's subjective, yeah.
How do you define tasteful?
Well, I think what ordering has already put together with the, the historical paint samples, like, uh, color palettes that work together, um, and then like start there. I would, I would be interested to just put the ordering palette in front of the public and say, is this better? Would you like something more along these lines?
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was suggesting. But, but not this. Just don't show them.
Right.
A, a rectangle.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like we're in a good spot for public comment. Next session, we'll have the public evaluate adoption of the ordering palette and construction augmented with the existing colors in the code. Uh, and then obviously we can speak to kind of what we're thinking about in terms of guidelines. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan. Yeah.
Can I really quick speak to the Pantone colors? Because I just looked that up and it says, is it legal to use Pantone colors? Written permission from Pantone's licensing and trademark department is required prior to reproduction or digital display of a Pantone color with trademark or copyright identification or use of Pantone's trademark for any color related products or services. So I, this is making me think, oh, this is why other cities haven't used this.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, clearly that's AI hallucination.
Are we saying there's not a color standard? Maybe, maybe we're saying that.
Have specially mixed colors. It says Pantone, they announced colors of the year and they, um, have standardized color matching system developed by Pantone.
So I think what we could do is, um, cause I was thinking about this also as it relates to paint specifically. And certainly there's all different kinds of paint. And so actually speaking to more of a specific brand might be helpful. But we could say that matches the, those, that color. And you can get, again, do in the kitchen. So, uh, you can get for like a buck the, the color swatch that's larger that any, anybody with the spectrometer can match to. So it doesn't have to be that brand, but it would be consistent with that brand color.
Yeah, you're talking about the num, the digits that come up from the spectrometer. Yeah.
And, and, and in answer to, to your question, sir, it, it's about, um, it's the difference between color and pigment. These are all pigments. These are not colors, right? When you're, when you're mixing paint, you're mixing pigment in. And their number system is all based on the type of pigments that they are mixing into the paint. The color, the actual like color being defined by this computer screen is something else.
Yeah. That's, can you put up ordering again? How do they refer to their colors? Mr. Love, can, can you put up, uh, slide five?
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, so I apologize.
It's really hard to hear when you're online, I understand.
Is it this one?
Slide five, ordering.
Page fourteen from the previous, um, presentation.
Yeah, we're, we're slide five right there, right?
Slide five, Andrew for ordering.
I believe I'm on it. Slide five.
Uh, you gotta make it the active slide. You're, it's currently active on seven. So if you haven't clicked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're looking for ordering's colors.
Is it showing it now?
No.
Yeah.
Maybe stop sharing and share again. It has the enable.
Oh, I know what's happening. Okay. Does it show it now?
Yes, now we see it. Thank you.
Yeah, this is good. This is good. Kelly Moore. Oh, so it's Kelly Moore. It's Kelly Moore. Okay.
So the Kelly Moore, um, paint brand is out of business. So if we were to use this example, um, in the next meeting, it would kind of have to be slightly different. Um, but we could definitely incorporate the colors that are on the left. And in fact, most, about half of those colors are what's in this, this slide. Um, they just look different because of, um, you know, the.
Placement.
The placement and also the, um, you know, that, that's possible that the ordering example was, you know, photocopied or something like that, but.
Ri- ri- right, but, but this is not something we want to show to the public. I mean, the ordering, uh, or ours or the other shows, um, you know, here's the combinations.
So.
Yeah.
So I just want to be respectful of everyone's time and we're at, uh, two hours and two minutes. Do I, yeah, I, I think, I think we've got a consensus position to go to public comment with city of ordering's palette and the existing one to solicit the public's feedback from that. Does that, does that work?
I think we should s- say to the public also kind of that this is, we're, we're trying to solve for your preference.
Yeah, I think we can. I think we can steer that in the actual engagement back and forth with, and opening remarks and all that.
Do, do we want to offer the carnation one as well as a potential?
I mean.
Mr. Ordering.
I, I think just ordering personally.
Yeah, I think, I think if you show too much, it's gonna be tough.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. So staff, Mr. Love, does that work? Is that, uh, sufficiently clear?
Think we have good direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are, are we gonna open up the trim or not?
I think we can.
I think let's hear from the public and then we can decide on that.
Okay, okay. I like that. Okay.
Okay.
Councilor Johnson?
I was just wondering if there were, uh, any other, uh, folks who, uh, would be experts that, um, could be specifically invited to, um, give their perspective or maybe field some questions from the planning commission. I'm thinking like, you know, a King County Preservation Officer or something like that.
That would be great. And I know we've got Mr. Anderson.
Specifically ask them to come to the meeting. So you guys can be like, you know, just like straighten us out on how this works and, and kind of their perspective.
No?
I can speak to that. Andrew and I met with King County Historic Preservation and they were totally agreeable to coming and speaking to the planning commission, which we thought would be a good idea. We realized we need to, the, the code was rewritten at some point, which put us out of compliance with our inter-local agreement with them. And so we need to go back and revisit that code. But we felt like the colors were kind of taking priority. So if we could get the colors figured out, then we'd go back and visit that and have the historical preservation come talk to us as we revamped our code. But if you're feeling like it's important to have them come first, we could certainly arrange that.
Can they not come twice?
Uh, they could maybe come twice. They might. Yes. They, they were very nice and accommodating when we talked to them.
I think that'd be great. I think that'd be a big value add to the conversation.
Okay. So we've got what we would like to review and obtain public feedback on and, uh, an invitation to, uh, King County as well as any other, uh, local experts. We're good?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right. Let's call that item of business closed. And, uh, let's move on to, uh, items of planning commissioner interest. Uh, Commissioner Murzak?
No, nothing this time.
All right. Vice Chair Kirkup?
I have a question, but it's not, I'm just curious, what does the, uh, Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, what zoning does it fall under? Is it a master institutional overlay or is it part of the ridge? I was just curious, like where does that land?
It's part of the ridge and the property, oh, I knew you were gonna, it's, well, it's zone, it's all zone mixed use. But the, it falls in, I'm confusing this with my last meeting. It's not neighborhood center. That was a different conversation. Um, it's all mixed use, but I'll have to go back and check on the actual underlying zoning in that development agreement.
Yeah.
So they, so there's one zone of mixed use in the whole ridge, but then there's different layers of zoning within, within that. So night, it, there was a resolution that was passed, resolution nine oh seven. And that specifically changed the zoning to allow for medical office buildings instead of just primarily residential.
Okay, yeah.
Do I have that right? I feel like, I feel like Councilmember Johnson probably has a way better handle on this than I do, but.
If memory serves, uh, that, uh, particular plot is part of the Snoqualmie Ridge two development agreement.
Oh, yeah.
Which, if I'm not mistaken, has expired.
The development agreement has expired, but then.
But, uh, the governing document then that is left over, my understanding of the interpretation of all those layers is the mixed use final plan.
Yes.
Right.
Gotcha. So I guess just to staff to suggest is I have some, I didn't want to, you know, get it all mixed up in their design review, cause it's not really our purview. But the climbing wall gives me some concern in terms of it actually being a used, um, you know, yeah, the idea, yeah, and the idea is to make it, um, an active. I mean, I, 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 I know how those conversations go on the other side and it's like, oh, we're so cool and there'll be people climbing. But more realistically, it's going to be a vacant space that no one's in and makes everybody sad. And so just to open it up for what else could actually serve as a community asset that would activate that space. Cause I, I'm, I'm just, and, and again, I don't know the uses in there, but I don't see a lot of climbing walls being used in rehabilitation purposes. So I feel like they were really truly trying to create a cool feature for the community and I just don't want it to be a swing and a miss for them.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can certainly have that conversation with them. I know they're really excited about the climbing wall and implement, like integrating that with their physical therapy and having an outlet for the community to come in indoors and be able to enjoy that with our, you know, we've, there's outdoor climbing walls, but I think they thought the indoor climbing wall would be a great amenity to the community.
Yeah. I mean, in such a luminous space, something that Snoqualmie Ridge does not have is an indoor play space. And it's sort of kooky because we have crazy weather and tons of kids. So I could see that getting, you know, tons, if, if really engaging the community is part of the goal. Um, and I would reference one that does it really well is Playdate Seattle. For what it's worth.
What's it called? Playdate?
Playdate Seattle. Just the type of structure it is. It's like netting and padded, um, structure and, yeah, it's.
Yeah, this isn't kid friendly. The climbing wall, I didn't think it's kid friendly. I don't think pediatrics, they don't have, uh, you know, a woman can't give birth, you know, in the hospital or anything like that, right? So it's not kid friendly. It's, it's, um, the champions there, I think are for.
They're not going for kids.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think they're going for kids at all.
Okay. So like adults?
It's more physical therapy, rehabilitation.
Working on their upper body. I mean, uh, stuff like that. That's how I took it. Yeah.
Working on their upper body.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, they, I mean, I mean, I don't know if you're stuck hanging, but no, it's a, it will work, but, um, no, I, I don't think there's any pediatrics or anything of that nature. I don't like its kids at all.
Okay.
I think it's more like an event.
I have a bit of one track mind, cause that's the stage I'm at, but, yeah, um.
I mean, there's, there's different forms of rehabilitation too. And when he said the AI workouts, it made me kind of wonder if there was some like eye-hand coordination that was playing into this new.
I'm very curious what that is. Yeah, I'm curious about it. I know. I think we're probably. Totally, totally. Um, yeah, like the incline on your treadmill goes up. Um, anyways, I just wanted to share that with staff for your conversations, not necessarily to influence their, um, their design, cause it, it does look cool. Design always. Uh, I think that's my only thing.
All right. Mr. Hurley?
Nothing further, thanks.
Mr. Murphy?
Nothing.
All right. I got a couple. Just joking. That's it for me. Um, all right. So that closes that out. Um, upcoming schedule, Ms. Davis?
It, it occurred to me that maybe it would be good to get the schedule back in the packet and I, somehow that fell off my radar. Um, so I'll try to work on that for the next packet. Trying to think of when our next meeting will be. So, um, but I'll get that back on. We've got the climate element coming in May, but it would be good to have like a actual work program in here that you could put your eyes on.
Yeah.
Next meeting should be May fifth.
May fifth. Okay, yes. The, um, OTAC is coming back with the climate element. And I think they'll be at both meetings in May because we're on a pretty tight deadline to get the climate element completed as much as possible before our grant expires the middle of June. So we've got a lot of work to do and heavy lifting on that one. Um, we're also, I mean, in addition to getting the color palettes back and doing the historic, uh, design review board and kind of revamping that code to get in compliance with the ILA. And we're also looking at bringing a wireless code to you later in the summer. So there's a lot of things in the work. There, we just have no staff right now. So I've got Andrew that comes in two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that's pretty much it for planning. Um, Andrew Lovins is working on some of the current planning, the bigger capital improvement projects that we've got going. And he's also the project manager. Uh, we're working on that collaboratively for the hospital. So we've got, you know, quite a few things going on with just, you know, we don't have a permit tech. We don't have any, you know, full-time planning staff right now other than me, which is I'm finding it a little bit of a challenge to juggle all the things.
Is that a, is that like just a budget problem or is that just backfilling open roles?
That's just backfilling positions. Yeah, we've, there's apparently been a bit of a staffing problem in community development in the last couple of years. So we just need to get that under control and then get back on a roll to getting things through.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Very good, okay, thank you. Um, all right, I, uh, move that we adjourn at, uh, nine thirteen PM. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, have a good night.